Okay, we will call the Mayor Patterson, are you on?
I am.
That's great. Alright, so we will call the regular meeting of the Athens County Regional Planning Commission for Thursday, December 10th, 2020 to order. By my count, we have at least nine members present, including myself, Greg Andrews, Steve Pearson, Commissioner Schmeele, Commissioner Eliason, Mayor Patterson, Member Smedley, City County Engineer Jeff Maiden, Member Jason Morosco, Health Administrator Jack Pepper. So Quorum has been established and I'm aware that Warren Jeffers will be joining us momentarily. First item on our agenda this morning will be, and just a note real quick, Steve Pearson just sent out a revised agenda in the last five or 10 minutes. So if you have access to email, please check it really quick, pull that up. And if anybody needs to make a public comment, Scott Thompson asked that we indicate so in the chat, just so you're aware. First item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from November 12, 2020. And has everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes that Steve sent out?
I'll move the minutes, Lenny.
We have a motion from Commissioner Eliason. Do we have any further discussion? Do we have a second?
Second, Jack.
Second from Jack Pepper. Thank you, Jack. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
And do we, I don't see, do we have any guests wishing to speak? I don't believe we have any guests on the agenda. We do have, looks like Bob Eichenberg is in the, as an attendee, but as acting county planner, I don't think Bob will need to be sworn in. Do we have any announcements and updates before we get into new business? Okay. With no announcements and updates, we can move into new business. The first is relating to the Athens Township zoning code from our May 14th, 2020 Regional Planning Commission from the approval that we made back then. Steve, do you have an update on that you need to share?
Yeah, Paul and I talked about this. One of the reasons we bumped this up to new business is just to kind of, even in my own mind, do a little review or a little history on what happened. The way the state statute is set up, the first review of the recommendation of the Athens Township zoning commission went to the Athens County Regional Planning Commission. It didn't go to the trustees first. So on May 14th was the meeting that regional planning reviewed the proposal and approved it and, or motioned that the trustees should approve it and place it on the ballot. What happened though in between was there was questions that came up about the constitutionality of some portions of the zoning code, specifically that the requirement that rental property obtain a permit and have a physical inspection in order to do that was a violation of the fourth amendment, which is your right to privacy. And that is based on a fourth district court decision here locally in Ohio, where a property owners association in Portsmouth, Ohio took the city of Portsmouth to court over that. And so rather than get into some questions about constitutionality, the, there was a second public hearing, it was called, and that housing, essentially a housing code section was eliminated from the zoning code. Another thing that came up too was that housing codes or property maintenance codes were not specifically allowed by statute under the authority of a set of trustees to put in the zoning code. It wasn't the appropriate location for it. So that was a kind of a second challenge. So that housing code was dropped out. There was then, though, an addition, which was essentially a public nuisance section that was put in about things like storing, where you store your garbage cans, how many junk cars you can have, you know, those kinds of things, more nuisance things rather than permitting things. So that was also changed at a second public hearing that was held on early July. The final version that was approved by the trustees, that was done on July 14th, it was placed on the ballot and then subsequently on November 3rd, it was passed by the citizens. The effective date was also questioned. Zach Saunders, legal counsel, finally advised us that the effective date was, would be not when the local board of elections certified the results, but it would be when the Secretary of State of Ohio certified the state results. That was on November 27th. So, once that was accomplished, I took a copy of it as required by the statute to the recorder's office. The text has been recorded, the map has been recorded, and it is in effect right now. So, just kind of a little bit of review there on what's happened. There's a long list of things now that the township trustees have to do. We have to seat a board of zoning appeals. We have to hire an inspector. We have to determine if that inspector will be a township employee or will we contract that work out to another agency or entity to do that. We have to come up with applications. And so there's several things that have to be accomplished now. I've started to work on some of those things, but believe it or not, I've already gotten an email from the zoning commission from a meeting they had last night where they want to know when enforcement's going to start. So hopefully everybody in the township that's affected by this can be a little patient while the trustees get this up and running. So.
Steve, do you guys have a, are you leaning one way or another in terms of hiring somebody or contracting that work out?
The, because we don't, we're just going to have to start the funding straight out of the general fund. There won't be any permit money coming in right away. It might be easier just to contract that out, say with the city of Athens or, Jack, possibly even with the health department. I know whenever I worked in the city, the city adopted, the city of Athens and the city adopted the web protection ordinance, that was turf to my department and I was in charge of enforcement. It was found pretty quickly though that that was beyond what I had expertise or time to accomplish and the city contracted with the health department to do that. And so again, the health department, that's a good idea. That might be another consideration to to kind of turf that over to the health department because there's a lot of overlapping, let's put it this way, this zoning code has as much included in it that has to do with sanitation and site conditions, public nuisance, as it does with setbacks and building heights. So that could be a good fit, Jack.
We should talk offline at some point.
Yep. As a matter of fact, one of, the email that I just got this morning, the zoning commission is asking questions about two businesses that have been established recently on the plains who appear not to have tapped into the sanitary, public sanitary sewer system, but have private systems that they have installed. So I'm in the midst now turfing that back to you and to Rich Castle because those are questions that are way outside of zoning code. My recollection of the Athens code, zoning code is, only says that if you're within 100 feet of a public sewer, you have to tap into it. So it's really not a, it's really not a zoning consideration or something that needs a lot of elaboration in zoning code, but it's definitely in the, in my opinion, in the original jurisdiction of the health department. Because even from when I worked in Nelsonville, Nelsonville has, well, one area just got sewered. There were three areas of the city of Nelsonville that didn't have public sewer. So anytime anybody wanted to install sanitary sewage system, a sanitary sewage system, they had to go to the health department, even though it was in the corporation limits of a city or a village. So, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of things here, Jack, I think where health and zoning kind of overlap.
Thanks, Steve.
Steve, just to jump in real quick, when you'd asked me about that, I went back and found that May 14th letter of approval from the commission, regional planning commission that you signed. I think that's kind of another reason too why we bumped it up as new business. Should there be another consideration by the regional planning commission for the new revised zoning code that was adopted as opposed to the code regional planning reviewed and approved, which is not the effective code?
Yeah, I think we might want to kind of double check with the prosecutor's offices to make sure, but I think if, if we recommended sections or language that's in there that is unenforceable or, you know, can't be included in the zoning code because of a court ruling, I would just say that then those sections of the code would be null and void regardless of what we recommended into the future. And so of cour, and I don't, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but now that a zoning ordinance has been established for that area, the regional planning commission would not be involved with any changes to the existing ordinance. Correct? That would be done by the zoning commission and the trustees, is that right?
The way it's set up, for example, in the city of Athens, if there was any change of the zoning code recommended, it would come through the planning commission. The commission would recommend a council, council would then change the law. In the case of township zoning, the zoning, township zoning commission recommends to the trustees and the trustees are actually the ones that determine if a change of zoning classification or text is needed. So, and there's another section too in the zoning code that says any section of it found to be improper or illegal does not void the entire code. So there's kind of a blanket there. If you get challenged on one small part, it doesn't essentially set the whole thing back on the shelf. You start over from square one. You don't have to do that. And if anybody knows anyone that would like to volunteer to be on the board of zoning appeals, the trustees are glad to to take those names. One thing that's very interesting, Andy Malika, who's a local attorney, who was on the board of zoning appeals in Athens when I started in 1994, lives in the meadows on the plains and has volunteered to be the first appeals member. So.
Do they have to live in the district or do they have to live in the township?
My understanding is you have to, well, you know what? I think we went through this before, Paul, and I think anybody that lives in the township can be on the commission. They don't necessarily have to be, or excuse me, on the board. They don't necessarily have to be in the regulated area.
If they live in the township but also live in the incorporated boundaries of the city?
That could be too, because I had a conversation just yesterday with Ted Linska, another trustee. Just for example, Dave Ratliff, who was part owner of Athens Flower Shop, lived on East State Street, was an Athens township trustee. So you can be a city resident and be, you know, be involved in township government. So yeah, it could be unincorporated and incorporated areas. It's a good legal question. Another thing too to think about, and this is for everybody that's associated with any of the township, Zach Saunders, our legal counsel, has won the election. He's the probate judge-elect. And so the prosecutor's office will have to assign a new, you know, a new contact for us here just shortly. So yeah, I'll get as many answers out of Zach as I can here before, before he leaves office.
Yeah, just as an update on that, I think his last day is tomorrow.
Oh goodness.
And they have assigned a replacement. I just don't know if it's public yet, but it's somebody that's new to their office.
Okay. There're going to be a lot of zoning questions to begin with. Now I've already, I'm already getting questions about people who've broken ground and are pouring footers, but they started before the effective date. So are they subject to zoning and needing to have a permit or not? So there are questions that have come up already.
Interesting. Thank you, Steve. Any additional questions on this?
Another thing, Paul, I might throw in real quick too, at the last meeting, Mr. Jeffers had asked me if I'd been in contact with the Dover trustees because when all this started, there was some indication from them that if it passed on the Athens side of the plains, they might consider it. So after our last meeting, I contacted Stuart Neal, one of the, one of the trustees in Dover Township. He didn't directly answer my question, but what he did say was that Dover Township trustees have been in discussion with the village of Chancy to possibly have a combined Chancy Dover Township zoning ordinance. Now, I don't think you can do that because I think you're going to find the same jurisdictional problems as we had when we couldn't combine Dover and Athens townships. We would have to have separate plans, separate maps, separate committees. I think the same might be true on that. But again, that, again, that's a legal question and it probably is a good one because if we're going to see some growth in the Chancy area based on the Bailey's Trails, there are all kinds of things that could happen with very little control. So, another good question and one probably that the, the new person assigned at the prosecutor's office will have to answer.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
Anything else, anybody? If not, we will move into, and Steve, if you don't mind, of course, keep us updated at the January meeting relating to any information from the prosecutor's office would be really helpful.
Right, will do.
Okay, next item on the agenda is old business. I don't believe we have anything this morning. If not, we'll move on to the continuing discussions and updates on planning matters. The first one is the US 50 corridor sewer, sewer expansion project. Lenny, it looks like some things are out to bid or some bids have been accepted?
We have contracts signed for five of the eight areas. We're going to begin construction in February and we expect the first connection to take place in July of 2022. We are working on getting out to bid the next two areas. That's what we're calling Phase Five and the Elliott's Bill and Phase Six areas, which is moving up towards, up Bradford Road towards State Route 56. Our plan is for March of 2021 to get that out to bid. And then the last two phases to go in June of '22 and hopefully everything will be all done and connected by October of '23. So that's where we are.
Lenny, what happens with those, those three phases that aren't, weren't under contract if you can't get them under contract? Can we still have a sewer?
They'll sit there till we can get the money or get them under contract, but you know, they're planned and ready to go. It's a matter of getting good bids for them.
Okay, great. Does anybody else have anything on this matter? Okay, next item then is electric aggregation. I see Luke on here. Luke, do you have any updates or Chris or?
I'll highlight a few things real quick. I don't think we've mentioned to this group. Few community grants that have went out recently or in the process of going out. We are providing $20,000 for the new Athens EMS station for a solar project there, which we're really excited to see. And we're also providing a little over $28,000 for the battery backup system for the water for the city of Athens. It's part of the local match for the AP grant they secured. So excited about both of those. Also wanted to highlight just for everybody's awareness that we do have a page on the SOPEC website that is going to keep a running balance of the carbon fund. We're now calling it the Athens Public Solar Fund. And that currently is going to cross over $40,000 this month. So we're going to be working with the city and with the sustainability commission here in the coming months to work on the public process to to gain public input of where that money should be distributed to deploy solar.
Thanks, Luke. Okay, Athens County Land Bank?
Well, we're just continuing on with demolitions and we had a, we just completed one group, got another group started. Greg Andrews and I are working with HAPCAP to do some, use some of the workforce development money instead of using diversion folks. So we're hoping to create some jobs and get some people trained to do some of the work that the land bank needs done. And we're starting to plan for next year. So we're going to be having a meeting next week where we're going to present a budget and you know, now that there's efforts to try to get some more funding from the federal level for demolitions and rehabs and such, so we'll see what happens. Otherwise, we'll just keep using our local monies. And all of our, I believe, if you go to the Athens County Land Bank website, all of our properties are up there. So we've gotten caught up. We have an AmeriCorps person and his name's Aaron and he's been doing a great job. So we're getting caught up. And I'd say that's about it.
Thanks, Chris. And I think we already covered plain zoning and land use. Do we have? Next item would be the H-friendly initiative. I don't, does anybody else on this meeting that wants to chime in on it? But as many of you know, where the update I would have this month is about the same as I've given for the last couple of months for the survey committees meeting this Monday to try to finalize that issue. And then we'll be working on figuring out how we're going to do stakeholder engagement and meetings in 2021 since it looks like we will be doing a lot of virtual work, at least for the first half of the next year. Just looking around here to see if there's anybody else on this panel. I don't think so. Gary's not on. Chris, did you have something to say?
Just if anybody knows any seniors that would like to participate, we have, I believe, eight or nine, nine different domains. So, you know, from transportation and housing and inclusion and outdoor activities and sustainability. So we are trying to engage more folks and around the county, not just, you know, city of Athens people. I'm not sure how many people we have from Nelsonville at this point. So, you know, it'd be nice to have representation from the whole county.
It would. I'm glad you brought that up, Chris, because that's what we're lacking is we, if we can really push this out, it'd be great if we could get someone from the northern corner of the county, you know, from the Trimble Clouster area, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. I know we have representatives from Amesville. We have representatives from Albany. Don't think, now that you say that, Chris, I don't think we have anybody from the Nelsonville area. Scott, maybe offline, if you have any names of either representatives from council that might be interested or older adults in Nelsonville that are active, we could reach out to some of them. That would be helpful.
Maybe Old County Commissioner Bill Tyson would be somebody that we could.
He's the first person that popped in my head. So yeah, definitely give him a ring later today or tomorrow.
Cool. Thanks, Scott. If there's nothing else on that issue, we will move to our next item, which is COVID-19 health emergency. And Jack, if you're still on the line, I'm sure everybody would appreciate an update.
Yeah, I'm here. Boy, have you ever wanted to know what living in a global pandemic looked like? We've arrived there at this point. So I'm not even really sure where to start. I'm happy to field questions, but I'll just give you a quick snapshot of what's happened in the last week anyways. We've seen a steady trend and increase in our, in our case count. So we're, you know, we, we set a record this week with 63 positives in one day. That the rolling like 10 to 14 day average is somewhere around 40, which is, you know, which is a significant number for us. We continue to make adjustments and evolve internally as, you know, as the pandemic evolves. Quite frankly, we've had to scale back on some of the response efforts that we were making early in, in August, September and into October to shift and focus on mass vaccination, which is coming sooner than later and continuing with that, that case investigation piece to make sure that everybody that's, that is in fact positive is getting contacted and isolation orders for those folks are going out. We continue to struggle to get solid information on the actual vaccine itself in terms of an arrival and a deployment. You know, of course, everybody can watch the new, the news and unfortunately we just don't have a lot of really good solid answers. The Ohio Department of Health doesn't have a lot of solid answers at this point. And that's because they're answering to the federal government and the federal government is not issuing anything specific right now. So, you know, Ohio Health doesn't know. The good news is, is that that is a prepositioned hospital for southeast Ohio. So they will be the very first organization in the state, along with nine others, to receive vaccine. You know, we are, we are optimistically hopeful that maybe next week, midweek, they might have something on site. That vaccine will be reserved exclusively for their staff. So they are only going to get enough vaccine to immunize their staff. The following week, there should be some vaccine available for first responders. So we're waiting on a priority list. I am assuming that EMS will be at the top of that list and then probably law enforcement and then, and then subsequently fire. So. But, but quite frankly, that's just speculation. We've not gotten anything in writing yet. In terms of our long-term care facilities, they are also being prioritized to the top of the list. Walgreens and CVS pharmacies have a federal contract with the government to do all of that vaccination. I've not yet seen the list, so I can't give you a comment on, on who is doing which long-term care facilities in Athens County. But in theory, that also is supposed to start, the first rounds of that are supposed to start next week. But I am, I am less encouraged by that piece of it happening than, than the hospital getting their piece and getting their folks immunized. So. One important note is that it is not a requirement. So it is the choice of, of the folks that are working in those places as to whether they get the vaccine or not. I talked to Ohio Health the other day and they are not going to force their employees to get the vaccine. So it'll be kind of interesting to see how it, how it rolls out. We ran a pop-up testing clinic on Tuesday. We saw 640 people. So we exceeded our expectation by about 150 people. We were anticipating 500 and, and got closer to 650. We are starting to see the results of that roll in and the good news is, is that I believe this morning there were 475 results in our queue and there were only a handful of positives. So we're actually behind the positivity rate in the state right now. We were banking on if, if 12% is the positivity rate around the state, that we would see somewhere between 75 and 100 positive cases. And with way better than half of the results sitting in our queue and only, you know, 10 or 15 positives, that's, that's a really good thing. So, that's kind of the, the fire hose. We're trying to wrap up our fiscal year, which, which has made some interesting dilemmas because we just have been so focused on COVID, trying to like cram, you know, six months worth of work into a week has been a little challenging. But one thing we are, you know, we continue to have some interest in the planners position. So, so we'll see what happens if we can, you know, perhaps, you know, make something happen to at least give the commissioners an additional option if they should have interest. So we're working on that this week. But again, that, that certainly is the pleasure of the commissioners and, and we're just trying to be, you know, just trying to be a helpful asset to the, to the community. So that's what I got.
Thank you, Jack. Does anybody have any questions or additional questions for Jack or additional comments? Jack, there's one that I have just kind of relating to continuation of public meetings and things like that. Sounds like what we should expect. So that we'll be continuing to meet like this for a lot of our government affairs and well into 2021. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, so.
Yeah. So, so there, there, there is a lot of really not so happy news coming out of the legislature, both at the state level and, and at the, the federal level. Um, at the federal level, they continue to sort of squabble over the details of any sort of, of, uh, any sort of legislation at all, whether it would be a, uh, you know, a care package or, or, or even an extension of, of, um, coronavirus, the Family First Coronavirus Act. Um, at the state level, uh, I think specifically what you're talking about, Paul, is the, the, uh, um, the suspension or the ability of, of local governments to be able to meet virtually. Um, I don't know where that is at in the legislature right now in terms of if, if, if it's been passed or not, or if the extension has been passed. Yes, I see some heads shaking. So, so that's great. So the, the, the good news is there is that we will be able to continue to meet in this format for the foreseeable future. Um, there is a bill floating around out there. I'm sure you all have read about it, Senate Bill 311. It's the bill that revokes the powers of the Ohio Department of Health and the governor to issue statewide mandates. Um, that passed the general assembly. It was then vetoed by the governor. Um, the House will absolutely override the veto and we're all sort of waiting on bated breath to see what the Senate does. Um, if the Senate brings it to a vote, um, they claim to have the votes to override the veto, at which point that would mean that all statewide orders would become null and void. And that it would also prohibit or limit, um, the ability of, of ODH, uh, and the governor's office to issue statewide mandates without the approval of the legislature. So, um, we'll kind of see what happens, uh, with that. But yes, foreseeable future, virtual meetings.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments?
If I may, I have a quick comment, uh, on that extension of the, uh, virtual meetings, Jack, that, uh, I received a, an email. Uh, I think it was earlier this week from, uh, the Chief of Police for a far southern southeastern corner municipality that was upset that that bill went through because that bill also includes, or that it was extended. Uh, because that also contained language to people whose driver's license or tags expired, that they have a grace period in which to go and get that, uh, to get their license renewed or the tags. Because that police department relies on using that as a way of, of generating revenue for pulling people over for expired tags and drivers licenses, which, you know, it's like no good deed goes unpunished, I guess, to some degree. But, uh, I, I did reach out to my chief of police to say, is that an issue in Athens? And he said, he said, of course not. So anyway, we don't use that as probable cause. I mean, if someone has expired tags and they see it, they'll pull them over, but it's not a probable cause issue where it was for this particular municipality. So just wanted to share.
Yeah, often in, in lame duck sessions like that, even in, at, at the end of the year, they, they call all of these bills Christmas tree bills because ornaments like that get hung on these bills that have absolutely nothing to do with the bill itself. We, we've struggled with a, a, a different bill that, that actually pushes licensure extension into the middle of July of next year. Which, which seems like, um, at, on the surface. It's creating a massive, uh, cash flow problem for local health departments. So those ornaments are tough.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. Appreciate your, all the work you, you and your staff and so many other people around Athens County are investing into this, uh, this pandemic. It's not a fun time, is it? But we appreciate all the work everybody's putting in here on this one. Um, next item on our agenda is our, uh, Athens County Regional Planners Report. And Bob, if you're on the line, Bob, I think I see you there. You're on mute right now. Uh, if you have any updates, uh, as the acting regional planner for the county?
Yeah. Hi, Paul. Thanks for reminding me. I was muted there. Um, good to see everybody. Yeah, just a couple of things quickly. Uh, Chelsea and I have been working pretty steadily on three grants that the county has, two TAP grants, uh, Transportation Alternatives Program. One of those is the Chancy Bike Way Spur. And the other is a ceiling project for the existing county portion of the bike way. And, uh, both of those need, uh, different levels of project management. Right now we're still in the engineering planning phases for both. Um, they're slated to be constructed as late as, um, spring of 20, uh, two. And so, uh, the, and, and probably that's when, uh, construction will start, not till 19, uh, 2022. The other project is a paddling enhancement grant, which the county received to put in a canoe kayak access at Savannah Park in Geysville. And so we're working on that. We have a meeting Friday, um, at the site to go over some of the details and then we'll get, uh, an engineer on board to design that. The other two things I'm working on just generally are, um, mostly helping Chelsea with subdivision and floodplain matters. And that is a pretty steady flow of material. Um, at least weekly, we usually have one or two issues in, in those categories. So I'm kind of helping with the, the technical side of things and Chelsea is keeping the office flowing smoothly. That's about it.
Any questions for Bob? And I see Chelsea's on the line too. Chelsea, do you have anything to report or if not, does anybody have any questions for Bob or Chelsea?
Hey, Paul, I'd like to bring up, uh, to the, um, the flood study that was done several years ago. Um, I believe it was 14 miles from the Hocking County line to essentially out to, um, Canavale. It's been on hold for several years now because of a protest that was issued by the city of Nelsonville. That still has not been resolved. And so when we're looking at effective maps, we're still looking at the 2009 maps as effective. So I've, I've gotten online a couple of times and you'll see, um, preliminary maps that'll pop up and they'll almost give the impression that those are the effective maps, but they're not. Um, I'm not sure when the city of Nelsonville is going to resolve that protest. Um, we'll see. I guess we'll just have to see what happens on that. I'd say that's in, uh, Law Director Hunter's court there in Nelsonville to get that resolved. And it is fairly important too, because there are a lot of people that are anticipating removal from particularly the floodway, uh, which would allow them then to, uh, start some residential construction, um, where floodway development for residential uses is completely prohibited in the floodway. Um, of course, there are other people too that probably think it's great because the map could change and put them either in the, uh, in the hazard area or even out in the floodway. So, but still those, Paul, I know you and I have talked about that quite a bit because I think in the case of Athens, you've got a lot of places where people are going to come out of flood hazard area or out of the flood. If the preliminary apps were, were in place. So, and I can tell you just by being involved recently in a property purchase, it's it's quite a bit of insurance money that you have to, to come up with for your lender, um, you know, if you're in that hazard area compared to if you're not.
You know, I worked on that. I helped them 2013, my first year. County engineer got involved in that and, um, connected Nelsonville Doyle. Doyle Hartman, a hydraulic engineer out of Columbus. I used to do those studies and brought him into it and kind of got involved in the, the whole concept of that, that hydraulic study and what needed to be done, that heck grass study. And, and I think that, uh, they hired a contractor, FEMA had a contractor out of Chicago. Um, I think it was Baker. I'm not sure. Michael Baker, I believe. And, yeah. And then they contracted, they subcontracted out that out to a firm out of Columbus, dots and limping bunch. I don't know what they're called now, but, um, you know, the problem with all that was they shifted that floodway dramatically in Nelsonville, all the way across Canal Street. So it's impacted hundreds of properties. And if you've, there was a 60 minute show a few years ago, what happened when the, and Sandy, uh, uh, just south of New York City, um, when the hurricane went through there several years ago. And people had to elevate when they wanted to do any kind of major remodeling on their home, they had to elevate 13 vertical feet. So they had homes in order to, you know, to do any major kind of reconstruction on your home or a garage or something. You know, they had to raise it 13 feet. And that's kind of what's happened here. So, so you got all these homes in Nelsonville where people won't be able to, um, effectively build anything on these lots because it's been moved into the floodway. And we're talking about entire neighborhoods that are west of the old, uh, where what's now the bike path that I designed that goes into Nelsonville. Um, that, that entire area is now in the floodways. It's dramatic. And, and most of the other side of the river is undeveloped. It's all just flood, floodplain that could be utilized as floodway, but they've shifted it for really dramatically. There was no reason. And Doyle did a great study. We talked about how the Corps of Engineers, um, how they actually calibrate their models. I don't think Michael Baker really calibrated that model. They made a lot of changes in Athens. There's a lot of politics involved and it was very political what happened in Athens. Uh, you know, Peton Stadium was, uh, in the floodway. And it, it was removed from the floodway, just on, just on a whim, really. I mean, it was one little, you put some numbers into the heck grass model and boom, it's out of there. So, you know, this is something that could be done. Um, and I was thinking about the other day as I drove through Nelsonville, uh, the fact that this continues to linger on, there's really no, no reason that, uh, uh, I think nobody's ever challenged FEMA, I think is what happened. I'll say I'll get off here, but I, I just want to make those comments.
So there is actually movement on that now. And, um, back at the beginning of COVID, they contacted us out of the blue and, uh, got all spun up on it. It's actually StanTech in Columbus doing it now. And so we, Gary Hunter and myself, we went up to StanTech and we had a big meeting with, uh, the folks in Chicago and Doyle was there as well. So, you know, as, as you mentioned, uh, Mr. Baden, that, you know, they had it going down Canal Street and one of the things, you know, I couldn't even figure out how they came up with that. And, you know, the big thing that they talked about was, uh, the levy around crab trees is not really a levy. It doesn't meet any requirement of a levy at all. And, uh, with that said, you know, there was some arguing back and forth. Doyle was able to point out some depressions that weren't really counted for. And, uh, you know, it was a, a lot of back and forth. So as of late, Gary Hunter's just been giving them the Heisman and, uh, I, I don't really know how else to say it other than it's just on hold. Uh, the last, the last proposal they had did not have it coming down Canal Street per se, but it did have it jumping the tracks behind Rocky and going through the middle of the trailer park and then through the middle of, uh, the old Rocky warehouse, if you guys know where that's at. So it literally goes right through the center of that warehouse, the floodway. So our latest pushback was basically just to keep it everything on the riverside of the tracks. So, and, and that's where it's at. And, and to your point with the, the political stuff, yes, the river did do a 90-degree turn at Peton Stadium down there. And Gary Hunter's definitely been pushing that issue as well. So.
Yeah. Well, that's the history of it. Like when they built the Krogers in Athens, the Krogers, that was all floodway. And that model was, uh, I know the guy that did that study back in the early seventies. And, and that, and that, that floodway was shifted so the Krogers could be built. The fill could be, um, you know, the fill could be placed and, and that's an entirely reasonable request that I, I'm familiar with all that area. I grew up in Nelsonville. And to keep the, the river on that side of the, uh, what is essentially a levy, it might not be a structural levy built for structural levy, but it still serves as a levy. And most of that is, has pretty, I mean, no reason to get into all the details, but I think it's critical. It's really critical that that be done, that, that that be followed through, even in a legal.
Absolutely. We even looked at how to make that a legit, uh, levy. And I, I actually spoke the words of cutting the trees down out of that embankment, nearly got lynched, but, uh, it's the, uh, so we're actually going to come up with some other plans. You know, one of my 2021 goals is to, uh, have our guys, we want to get some of those, um, uh, the water dams. I don't know if you guys have seen those, that you can inflate with water and essentially within 10 minutes there, you know, 20 feet long, eight feet high and you're connecting together. And we're going to run some drills, you know, in town just to make sure we are safe because all it does is take a wind event to knock that tree over and pull out the root ball with a foot or two of water in it and then town's full.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that'll be eight years in March when those initial preliminary maps were released. So I, I wouldn't be surprised if we get new countywide firm maps before that's ever resolved and they just kind of sweep it onto the rug, especially Scott, if there's, um, uh, active pushback going on from Nelsonville. But we'll see, I guess.
We have no intent of letting off the throttle, that's for sure.
Interesting. Thanks, Scott. Anything else, uh, for the county planners? If not, we can move on to our roundtable reports. Uh, keep, just keep in mind it's, uh, about 10 to nine. So I'm sure many people have to leave at nine. So, uh, we can try to keep this brief and, um, I'll try to go in order as best I can as everybody appears on my screen. Uh, the first thing I can do, I'll start with our county commissioners, uh, Lenny and Chris, do you have any updates this morning?
I don't have anything else.
Um, you know, I guess this topic of our planning department and, uh, hiring our, a new planner and how that's going to work. Um, I've been really scratching my head and trying to educate myself, um, to, to come up with some ideas and proposals. Uh, because I feel like the planning department, it touches or, or could touch or should touch a lot of different parts, um, of, of, you know, government and our communities. And, um, you know, it's been, uh, frustrating that we haven't been able to keep our planners for very long. And, you know, maybe the pay of those is part of it. Um, you know, I, I really appreciate Bob helping us out again and Chelsea. Um, but hopefully, you know, with this next round of hiring, we can hopefully find somebody like Bob who wants to stick around for a couple of decades. Cause, uh, you know, the, the whole challenge of planning and like we have a planner for a couple of years. I mean, it's just like tough. Um, so anyways, I, I got to go to a virtual conference a couple of weeks ago and it was sponsored by the Ohio Economic Development Association and the, uh, planners, American Planners Association. And, uh, I, I thought they had a lot of good points. Um, but that's just economic development and it doesn't include all this other stuff. So just working on trying to find a solution to that. And so that's about it for me.
Thank you, Chris. I don't believe Commissioner Atkins is on here. I was looking for him. There's a lot of boxes on my screen. Um, uh, next, uh, city of Athens, Mayor Patterson.
Thanks, Paul. I'll be brief. Um, we've been asked to apply for an ARC Access Road Grant, uh, from ARC. Uh, and that would be for a connector road between West Washington or West State Street and West Union. So that's exciting. That's working its way through council now for authorization to go ahead and submit that application. Uh, we've got OPWC round 35 coming up. Uh, some of you may have received the letter in terms of the subcommittee getting together and look at projects. Uh, so that is, keep that on your radar. Um, city council, I just signed a minute ago, um, a street policy. It's going to be the complete street policy that council, uh, approved at the last meeting. If anybody's interested in that, I can get that to you, what that policy looks like in terms of creating, um, basically active transportation with projects in the city of Athens, um, henceforth and forevermore until it gets rescinded. And the last thing, uh, there's a very interesting Senate bill, uh, that'll probably die, um, under the 132nd or 33rd General Assembly, but it might get picked up again in the 134th. And that being, uh, a, uh, a bill that would disallow And that being, uh, a, uh, a bill that would disallow uh, colleges and universities, uh, to have on campus, requiring students to stay on campus, uh, for your whatever OU, it has the first two years that you're required to live in the residence halls. Uh, because they, this ordinance reads that this, these residence halls creates congregate settings. Uh, and therefore it, the freshmen and sophomores, and in some cases juniors and seniors should be living off campus on the, the economy. It's an interesting thing. I, I don't know where this is going to go. Uh, it would certainly with our housing stock create significant additional challenges. Um, it's, it's certainly an interesting bill and I personally, I hope it dies, but whatever. That's all I've got, Paul.
Aaron, do you have anything to add as, uh, city council?
Nothing else to add for city council. Um, just to share, Board of D D is switching back to mostly remote, uh, limited in-person, uh, services provided. Beacon School as well as providing mostly remote, just based on our numbers. We'll be re-evaluating after the holidays. Hopefully coming back to four days a week in-person instruction at Beacon, the week of January 11th. But we'll be monitoring the numbers as I'm sure all you will be as well and we'll consult with health department such, that's just where we are right now. And I have to hop off at nine, so. So thanks, guys.
Uh, Nelsonville, Scott Frank.
Good morning, everyone. We are wrapping up phase one of the sewer plant. They're still in town. Hopefully they are out of here by colo- or by Christmas. Uh, phase two bids are going out really soon. And then we're also, uh, putting together a plan for phase three and and expanding the sewer even more, which is going to be really good. The other thing, and I'm not sure, I don't know if this is the form or not, but one of the things that, uh, I've talked to the folks here about, especially with, uh, COVID and, uh, the schools empty on certain days and such, you know, maybe putting together an active shooter exercise and taking advantage of the schools, not necessarily having kids in them, but maybe to train with staff or law enforcement and, you know, the local agencies here. So I don't know, uh, I don't know what that looks like, if that's a countywide thing that, that there's any appetite to do, but I know it's important for me and I would definitely want my, uh, police folks to do that, but definitely interested in the bigger thing. And then the last thing is we have, uh, a drive-up COVID testing site at Nelsonville York High School on Tuesday from 10 to 2.
Thank you, Scott. County engineer Jeff Maiden. Good morning, Jeff.
Hi, good morning, Paul. Um, don't really have a lot to talk about. I know we're banging up against nine o'clock here. Um, we're working on about five slip repair designs. We got one out for bid now. It's really critical. County Route 75, we've had it closed to one lane for about several months. Um, and we're basically working on planning for next year, what our plan is going to be, our roads, bridges, uh, grants, what we've got, we've got a paving grant in, you know, I'm looking at a macro for the whole county on what our, um, we've got about 159 miles of pavement. We're paving about five miles a year. So that's, uh, over 30 year cycle. That's, we can't manage 30 years cycle on asphalt. We can't pave a road every 30 years. So I'm looking at those things. 57 bridges to replace. I'm working on a macro plan for the next 10 years, trying to figure out how we're going to do this, you know, what we're going to be able to maintain and try to adjust it accordingly. That's all I got.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, Greg Andrews, Waterloo, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, I do. Just, uh, a, a problem that is, uh, increasing in Waterloo Township, and I'm sure it is, you know, around the area is, uh, dead trees in the right of way, primarily ash trees. It's becoming a real problem for us and, you know, to be able to afford removing those trees, uh, a lot of these trees are beyond the expertise of our, our, our staff. So, um, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a problem everywhere. And I just wonder, and we don't need to go into a lot of discussion right now, but if, um, anybody has any input about that, I'd be interested to know. And, you know, you can give me a call, email me or, or whatever. Maybe we can have this discussion further if it is a problem for other folks. I'm sure it is. So, um, that's, that's all I have.
Thanks, Greg. Does anybody have any comment on that request?
No, just, I'll just echo what Greg was saying. I mean, dead trees in the right of way, um, it is a challenge, you know? We're seeing significant locations here in the city of Athens as well, most notably, um, Palmeroy Road. As you're driving up the Longview Heights, all along there, uh, we see a lot of dead ash that one person would say, oh, it's, that's habitat for animals. Others would say that's, that's a good way to get killed, um, if that thing drops over. So.
Yeah, the ash trees, you know, it's a huge problem for us. It's something we've been working toward for the last year. Um, ODOT has a plan, but following their plan on what they're doing with it. They, uh, and I recently bought a shear to mount on our, uh, our old grade all. And so that could become available, Greg, but we're, I'm trying to work out a plan on that too. That's another thing we're working on. It's, uh, I've talked to the County Engineers Association twice about it at our, at our monthly board meetings about trying to get funding. I know it's been brought up to Jay Edwards. Um, ODOT spent over a million dollars last year on one contract and they cut a fraction of their trees in District 10. They have a, they also have a shear that they move around the 10 county area and each county gets it for a month. They've been using college students to go out and use iPads to locate these trees in advance. But they're, they're, as they, they rot, they're getting more and more dangerous. The tops are falling out. And so we've been using, um, you know, tree cutting companies some on the ones that are really dangerous because you gotta really be careful. The tops will come down like spears. They're rotten from the top down. So they're very dangerous to cut. So it's, it's a huge problem for us too.
And, uh, Paul, Bob Eichenberg, just to add to what, uh, everybody's been saying, I'm a Waterloo resident. And so, um, I can certainly back up what Greg's saying and I logged a bunch of ash on my property, but out towards the right of way, it's just too dangerous. And, um, there are certainly still even on my property, a number of ash trees and some of the overhanging limbs are the biggest concern immediately. And, and it'd be fairly easy to identify even those limbs if there were a shear that could come around. Um, you, you don't necessarily have to take the whole tree down to make it a lot safer. Um, but it's obvious that some of these bigger limbs are going to be in the road this winter and, uh, hopefully no one gets hurt. It's a big job. It's a, it's, it's somewhat overwhelming. I haven't even called the trustees about my situation because they're dealing with it all over the place.
Right.
Yep. Hey, Paul, this is Steve Pearson. I'd like to add too. I'm meeting next week with Ann Bonner, the Urban Forester, to review a complaint that we received on North Point Drive. Um, it's out towards Stroud's Run. Um, it has to do even just with live branches that have, don't, you know, aren't dead or looking like they pose a problem right now, but they create a canopy over the road. Um, some of the residents believe that those should be trimmed back even. Um, they brought up at the same time, two cable lane. Um, if you drive up and down Cable Lane in the city, believe it or not, there's one little stretch that's in the township. We have to get that sorted out here shortly. And I'm going to meet with, um, David Briggs, the co-director is going to meet with Ann and I also, um, about that. Um, but for example, we just, Athens Township just spent significant dollars on North Blackburn. If you come out Dairy Lane, hang a left, head up the hill, we had quite a few dead branches hanging right there that were an obvious hazard and we did take those out, but just like Greg and Waterloo, little townships, we don't have the kind of money it's going to take to clean all of this up. Plus you have citizens now that are very concerned because we've actually had three deaths from falling trees here recently in this county. Um, where do you start? And all of a sudden, when a citizen, um, points at you and says, you're my chief safety officer, I believe, when it has to do with these things, um, you know, kind of, it, it puts you in a difficult situation because you'd like to deal with it, but there's just, like Bob said, it's overwhelming if you start thinking about it. Um, anyway, it's a problem that's going to have to be solved one way or another because I don't know about the rest of you. I've got ash limbs crashing down right now that, that wiped out my chicken coop one time, but, uh, the chickens will survive.
You know, the other thing I'd like to mention, something that's been on, I've talked to commissioners about for a long time and uh, if we could find some, some pieces of land around the county, um, where, where I, we have, we have all kinds of material, ditchy material that we need to waste. Another use for that land would be to stack this timber. This, these ash trees are dead. I know a lot of people burn them. They make good firewood. And you got a lot, you know, during this pandemic, you got a lot of people are really hurting financially. And that wood, you know, they use that wood to heat their homes in South, in, in southeastern Ohio and Athens County. So if we had a place where we could stockpile this wood, it could be cut up for firewood. A lot of times we'll leave it for landowners. We're cutting 250 trees a year. When you count all the time that we go out in the evenings and everything else. And so if we could, you know, if there's any ideas on, on where we could stockpile all this, uh, this wood, I think it would be, it'd be great for a lot of people that need firewood.
Don't even think about putting it at 83 Columbus Road. We already have a whole bunch of concrete sitting down there.
I'm not sure where 83 Columbus Road is exactly.
It's the old BiLO gas station across from, from, uh, from East Nut, right above Curtis.
Okay.
You're right.
You know, just so everybody's aware, um, this issue is starting to be addressed more in the hazard mitigation plan that the county does. And this last time we incorporated climate change and, and some of these, uh, kind of biological botanical issues because obviously it, it has become a hazard to us. So we're trying to, to think ahead and maybe in the next round, uh, every five years, that plan needs to be updated. Uh, we could start to specifically look at what you're talking about, Jeff, finding areas and, and dealing with some of this stuff. So it doesn't catch us off guard so much.
Possible there might be grants down the road for it. If we, uh, we should probably double check our hazard mitigation plan to see the, see what we touched on with that. Um, Steve, as long as, as long as you're, uh, still here, do you have any updates from Athens Township?
No, I don't have anything else.
Additional?
No.
Okay. Um, uh, Tim, are you still on? Tim Wern, do you have any updates?
Let's see. Can you hear me?
Yep. Good morning.
Okay. Uh, uh, just, uh, you know, we're having the tree problems too. I have our guys go out and knock limbs off, but they're too dangerous to have them try to take the trees down. So we're knocking limbs off all over the place, but at some point in time, those whole trees is going to have to be dealt with. And each one of them is an expense. So the other thing is, is our, our levy passed in November, so we ordered a new full-size dump truck and we're excited about that. So we won't see it until April, but we did order a new truck. That's all I got.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, let's see. Molly Fitzgerald, Molly, do you have anything from the Athens County EDC?
Well, uh, good morning, everybody. I don't want to steal your thunder, Paul, but I just wanted to bring up the, the pre-vet form that Paul and I worked on um, for Jobs Ohio Community Planning Grants. Um, so hoping that, um, that's for Stinson Avenue, planning and rehabilitation along the Stinson Avenue corridor. So really hoping Ohio Southeast and Jobs Ohio see the long-term benefit of that plan and, um, invite us to submit a full application.
Thank you, Molly. Now I see Ben and Scott from the County Auditor's Office. Uh, do either of you have anything to add?
Uh, nothing to report for Jill Thompson's, uh, Auditor's Office.
Thank you, Scott. Trying to see who I've missed here. Jessica Dunn from the city, do you have anything to add? Okay. John Kautowski, do you have anything to share this morning?
I do not. Thank you.
Warren?
Uh, I don't know if it got mentioned because I was late getting on the apartment complex that was proposed for Connet Road, I guess, has bitten the dust, uh, for not being able to get the tax, uh, credits and the type of financing they wanted. And also, uh, there is a, um, waste dealer evidently, or salvage company over in Vinton County that is put out on, uh, a notice on Facebook that he'll pay for abandoned cars or machinery that people have. Uh, and they'll come pick it up and pay cash for it. So I shared it because that's been one of my pet peeves I'd like to see for the whole county. And here's some guy next door to us is offering money to come do it. So, you know, it's out there if, if we look. Uh, I, that's the only few things I can think of.
Thank you, Warren. And does anybody else have anything to share this morning?
Uh, real quick, um, Jason Moroska is on and, uh, just give a little update about the new Athens EMS station that is almost complete. Um, it's getting painted and all that stuff. Uh, does anybody have a contact with Columbia Gas? We're struggling. We have to get Columbia Gas installation done before we can get occupancy. Um, Cassie over at Hoon has been frustrated. So if anybody has that, um, somebody that
Chris, this is Jessica. I can, I can help with that.
Okay. Well, let's talk afterwards.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, we're really excited about this building. It's going to be, I guess, a high-performance building. Um, it's super insulated. It's got solar panels already installed on it. It's, uh, and then Jason, if, if you want to kind of chime in and, and talk about some of the design features, um, please do.
Um, no, I was just wondering how, how it was coming along as, uh, the mechanicals and everything falling into place is, uh, how's the process been? Uh, I mean, you know, the building is going to be really nice as far as energy efficiency is concerned. And, uh, the first blower door test was actually, uh, way better than I expected it to be. So it sounds like they're doing a really good job. Um, uh, not just interested, uh, everything coming together. Okay?
Yeah, when I was over there yesterday with the architect and Chief Caleb's and the mechanicals are all going in and, uh, so it looks like the only, the thing that's holding us up to complete the, um, occupancy permit is, is the, um, gas. And I'll get with Jessica on that. But I'm hoping that, um, you know, I think there's a lot of interest. Uh, I'm trying to talk to residential builders as well as other entities who are going to be building, um, other public buildings to try to get the standard. It only costs about 5% more and I, I think it'll be really interesting to see the long-term economic uh, benefit for the, the taxpayers of Athens County. So hopefully we'll be ha- having a grand opening at some point.
Great. Uh, yeah, that's great. That's what I said. Yeah, definitely want to see how it performs. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Is there anybody else for the good of the order?
Hey, Paul, I'd like to point out too, on the agenda that I sent out, if everybody didn't know, I have the tentative meeting dates for next year.
Yes.
It's always the second Thursday of each month, but, um, I know it helps me to go back sometimes when I'm doing my calendar, if I don't fill it in for the whole year. Uh, just so everybody knows, those, all those dates on there are the second Thursday of each month.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate you putting that together.
Paul, this is Jessica. Um, I have, I'm sorry, I was muted before when you called on me. I just wanted to give an update that the city is continuing to work on the, um, design of the improvements needed for the county sewer connection. And I'm working on setting up regular meetings with Gary Salkott. Um, just so that we're all updated and on the same page.
Along those lines as well for the city, uh, the cities, uh, are updated. Uh, comprehensive plan had a first reading at city council on Monday and hopefully that should be approved by the end of this year. So moving right along, um, our next meeting date is scheduled for January 14th, 2020. And, um, uh, unless there's any other And unless there's any other business loop, did you have anything to add, I think? Just to double check. Okay. Unless there's any other.
Paul, if I may, just real quick.
Absolutely.
And this is where I want to make sure I get announcements coming out in the future. I've been appointed to the Ohio Treasurer's Office, South, Southern Ohio Regional Advisory Board. We had our inaugural meeting the other day. But as we continue to have these meetings, I'd like to reach out to this group and see if there's treasury-related issues or questions that any of you might have. And I will try to report out any new programs. Things like the Results Ohio, which is the pay-for-success model of, of funding that the state sees value in and has jumped into that space. So just to let you know.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.